Welcome to, we're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 15th. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for future cable broadcast. I ask that you please silence all your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one item on our agenda this evening for discussion, and that's the update on the DESI mask requirement. We're going to begin with a discussion on the topic. If, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Bailey. If you could please give us an overview of the Commissioner's recommendations, and then also offer your recommendation for the district, please.
Sure. So on Wednesday, February 9th, Governor Charlie Baker and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, in conjunction with health officials, announced that the statewide mandate, the current state mask mandate, will expire as of Monday, February 28th, 2022. And if you recall, prior to that mask mandate, we had a school committee meeting where the committee voted, it was a three to two vote, for masking requirement in the school. And personally, I think that we knew the direction that the state was going in. We also saw the numbers increasing, but I think things are very different right now in terms of our numbers. So several weeks ago, we were reporting cases of up to 46, 42, 25, but it's been declining every week. Last week, we reported nine cases, and all of these numbers are a combination of students and staff. So with that being said, it's nice to see that we're going in a very nice, positive direction. We see that same type of direction and movement with the numbers, the positivity rate with the town numbers as well. So with that being said, I want to just review with you some of the mitigation strategies that we've put in place in the district that I think are important, because even though the Commissioner and the Governor are saying, you know, no more statewide mask mandate, I still want to remind people, we're in a pandemic, and we want to keep everyone safe. So what we want to do, what we want to say is, we had the test and stay program here at school. We still have that for the symptomatic people. We also have the COVID detection dog program from the sheriff's office. They come in weekly. So between that, and now we have this new at-home COVID testing program that the district just adopted, and this is an opt-in program for all staff and all students. And what it will do is, you basically opt in, we're going to send out the link again, you opt in, you get one of these kits that contain two tests, and we're going to recommend that you test on Wednesdays moving forward. And we'll reevaluate this program in April. But what we want to do for those folks who opt in before the vacation, because we've always seen a spike in our numbers after a vacation, and like those numbers, those high numbers are right after the Christmas vacation. I don't think we'll go back that high, because typically over Christmas and Thanksgiving, you have a lot of family gatherings. This is more about families that potentially could be going on vacations, right? So I'm encouraging everyone to opt in, because they would get a test every two weeks, a box like this, with two tests, once per week. Right before the vacation, for those who opt in, we're going to ask everyone to test on Sunday. And this is just a precaution, so that we hopefully keep our numbers down, because we don't want to see the big spike that we saw after those vacation times, okay? So at this point, I'm recommending that we go, and here's what I want to say about tonight. There is no right answer here or wrong answer. This is the first time that we're all dealing with this pandemic, and I can tell you that people feel very strongly on both sides. I've had parents say to me, you know, it should be our choice. We don't want to mask our kids. But I've also had other parents that say, they're worried, and they want their children to wear masks. So there's no right or wrong answer.
I just want to remind the public that this is the school committee's business meeting. We're in discussion now. There will be an opportunity for public comment. I just want to allow Dr. Bailey to give her recommendation for the district, please.
And I haven't made it yet. So one of the things that I'm recommending, and these are federal mandates, well, the busing is still a federal mandate, so I'm going to recommend that based on our numbers and the trends that we're seeing, that we align ourselves with the state and make it optional. Those folks who want to wear masks, adults and students, can certainly wear the masks. By federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses. I would still say that kids have to bring a mask to school, whether they wear them or not in school, because if they go to the nurse's office, they will be required in all of the school health offices, whether it's the test and stay or the actual nurse's office. And also, any students or staff returning from a five-day quarantine following a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use, other than when eating, drinking, or outside, as well as conducting active monitoring for symptoms through the 10 days of exposure. So they would be required to wear a mask if they test positive for five days. So what I want us to, you know, discuss tonight is, I think we've got to be super respectful of everyone's feelings. I'm going to give you an example of something that occurred today. We were doing yearbook pictures at the middle school, and one of the students asked the advisor, and I wasn't present, I heard about the story afterwards. One of the students asked, can we take the picture without our masks on? And I thought it was a good question, right? Because it's going to be a picture in their yearbook. And so the advisor, the person in charge with the pictures, just decided at that moment, anyone who feels comfortable can remove their mask for the picture. Only seven students felt comfortable taking their masks off at this point. So what I'm saying is, we have to be respectful of both sides. I think we have to monitor the numbers. We do it every week. I work very closely with our Director of Student Services. We report our numbers to DESI. But I guess what I am saying is that our numbers are trending in the right place. I'm strongly recommending that people opt into this program, so that we can give them, they're free of charge, just opting in, you get, you get one of these kits that the students can use. And here's the thing, you have them at your hands if and when you need them. So if you see that your student is experiencing symptoms, instead of going to the pharmacy and paying money, what I'm saying is, this is free through the school department, but you have to opt in in order for us to order that for you. And if you opt in, my recommendation, and it's voluntary, my recommendation will be on Sunday, before the kids and staff come back from vacation, that everyone test on Sunday, because that's a trend we see, the numbers typically go up. But my recommendation is to follow the state and make it optional when students and staff return from the February vacation. Does anybody have any questions about what I just outlined? Keeping in mind that I would still be requiring students to have a mask with them each day, should they need to go to the nurse's office.
That was, that was my question, Dr. Bailey. Is it possible to provide the boxes for, of masks, so that if, I imagine we already have masks, but those who don't have, right?
Yeah. I mean, sometimes kids just like their own mask, but we certainly have masks. We have them in the nurse's office available. No one's ever, we've never told anybody that they can't have a mask. And I'm super respectful about how people feel, because everybody has a reason for how they feel. So there's no right or wrong in this situation, but I do feel like our numbers are trending in a way that we can go align ourselves with the state, and if people want to take these masks off indoors, we're not going to change anything else right now. We'll keep the social distancing. I'd like to see and look at our numbers as we move forward with that. So that is my strong recommendation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I'd like to give an opportunity now to my colleagues to ask questions or briefly share your opinion.
I did have one question. So, Dr. Bailey, along those lines of being respectful, just, and this is probably obvious, but, you know, if we were to go down this road, how are we going to make sure that we have an environment that all the kids feel comfortable, whether they're wearing a mask or not, that they feel safe, that there isn't bullying, that, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for us to teach our kids, and that like differing opinions are okay, and we're all part of the same community, so how do we ensure that we have that?
First of all, I'm really proud that we have such a wonderful school community presently, with the students we have and the staff we have, and the respect that I do see. But I think when this happened today, where only seven students pulled their mask down, nobody made a big deal out of it. And that's what should happen. It is not a big deal. It's a personal choice. People, for example, somebody might feel like, you know what, I'm going to be going to see grandma, and she's, she's visiting from out of state, and maybe I want to wear my mask during that time, but maybe when she leaves, I don't want, I don't need to wear my mask anymore. I think that's fine. I think that's a personal choice, but if we heard any issues of anybody making any derogatory comments, it would be addressed, for sure. We are very big on a sense of belonging here. We, we did surveys at the school. We're constantly working at it at both schools, to have a nice, positive culture with our students, and things like that will be addressed. But I, I honestly have not seen any issues with children wearing masks and saying anything. And this is just an example of something that happened today, and it was like, no big deal. So.
So, I just want, can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, I'm not disagreeing with everything you've presented, except, except when you talk about trend and figures. When Governor Baker announced his, you know, the lessening of, you know, the mask restrictions, he said, "Given the extreme low risk to young people, and widespread availability of and proven effectiveness of vaccines, and the distribution of accurate test protocols and tests, it's time to give our kids a sense of normalcy and lift the mask mandate on a statewide basis for schools." Now, he mentioned a factor of widespread availability of and effectiveness of vaccines. A cushion it, in the last few years, our children were, from five to 11, to include many of our age groups, 25% of the children have been vaccinated, and 20% have been fully vaccinated. The statewide average is 51%. Some communities like Wellesley are up to 83%. So we have a low, extremely low rate of vaccinations, which does not fit with Governor Baker's mandate, you know, to lift them, one of the factors. So therefore, it's, therefore, what we're doing, basically, even though the other factors that Dr. Bailey has presented are in place, the low vaccination rates lay a lot of our youngsters into, into some type of danger. And so until we get the vaccination numbers up, even for a statewide average of 51%, then I'd feel more comfortable in, in, you know, accepting your full recommendation. Secondly of all, when communities before the, before this lifting, you know, February 28th, they in turn could opt to get out if they, you know, if, and 40 communities did, when they reached a threshold of 80% vaccinations. So we're only down, way down in this area of 20, 20%. Therefore, I think that we're, unless we have a dramatic increase in our vaccinations, I think all the factors that will fall in place for Governor, you know, Governor Baker's lifting up would fall in place. But I think, I think we've got to, I'd like to, maybe you'd like to respond to that, Dr. Bailey, but I think that the low vaccination rate does cause us some real issues.
Yeah. So I did get some updated numbers. I'm not sure.
That was in the Globe of last.
Last week or something?
Yes. I know, at time, Governor Baker's speaker's announcement.
Okay. So as of today, I reached out to the Board of Health as well as Chief Gallagher, and you know, we get those Friday phone calls, where he's telling us how we're doing as a community. Right now, eligible residents for vaccination percentage is 67.5%, and that's vaccinated. Is that right? Which I actually thought was pretty good. That's not, that's not the number for children, because I think that's lower. But I think that 67.5% is a decent number. We have, right now in the community, a 14% positivity rating as of 210, 22. And the chief said that, on average, it's going down three percentage points for the past three weeks. And obviously, you know, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball in front of us, but the hope is that we continue to see the decline. And the one thing I just wanted to add is, maybe it's because we've been wearing the masks, but we have seen no evidence at this point in time of transmission at school. So again, I think people will still wear masks, believe it or not. I do think we'll have a mix, but I'd like to at least try it. We've had this on our agenda every month, and I respect people, how they feel on both sides of this issue, but I'd like to try it and then look at it each month. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey. I, I just want to say personally that, you know, given all the mitigation strategies that we have in the place and the trends that you have outlined, I also agree with your recommendation on moving forward with the state mandate. I don't know if you want to comment as well, Mrs. Gomes?
Yep. So just to comment on what John had said. I think vaccination rates, people that want to be vaccinated, got vaccinated. I think if we're looking for increase in numbers in vaccination, we're not going to see it in this town. I think parents have made up their minds about their children, and I think they have every right to do that. So again, on that note, you know, you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, and if you want it, great, and if you don't, that's okay as well. I want to go over what you said about transmissions in school. At the lunch, where children do not have masks, and they're eating, and they're three feet-ish apart, we haven't had any transmission, which is an excellent direction to be in, especially since the children are maskless. I just want to go over again the points that you've made. So what you're recommending is that masks are optional for everyday students, except when they go to the nurse's office, and when they go on the bus. And then if they are COVID positive, they are to quarantine for five days, and then when they get back to school for five additional days, they have to wear masks. Is that correct?
Correct. If they're not, if they don't have symptoms.
If they don't have.
They're supposed to stay home if they still continue to exhibit symptoms. But yes, if they're, after five days, they're not showing symptoms, they would be required to wear a mask for five days.
In school.
In school.
Okay.
Let's make one point.
I support that.
I didn't suggest that of trying to mandate any type of vaccination.
No, 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 not at all. Not at all.
I think you're making the point that we can't change it.
What I would say is that we're extremely low, which raises the risk of lifting masks higher than, say, the state average.
And what I'm trying to say is that I don't think it matters. I think what, the numbers that are here in a cushion it are going to stay regardless of anything else that's going on.
Just to.
An opinion of mine. Thank you.
Mr. Tubbs, Mr. Hood, do you want to make comment?
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion hasn't changed since we voted last time. I'm going to be in support of Dr. Bailey's recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my opinion probably has changed at this point from the last time. I think we've tried to emphasize throughout this that we need to be flexible, we need to adapt, we need to pivot when the circumstances warrant, and so it feels like this is another one of those inflection points for me, so I'll support the recommendation. I think, as we've done all along, it's, it's important that we continue to monitor what's going on. If we've learned anything in the past two years, it's that this virus is dynamic, and, you know, the most important thing is to keep our kids in school, keep our community safe, and we need to continue to watch that, but I'll support the recommendation.
Great. Any other comments or questions by the committee?
I just want to go over one more thing. We got an advisory today from DPH, and DPH now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors, not your own home. If you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at an increased risk for severe disease because of your age, or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is that increased risk for severe disease or is unvaccinated. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated should continue to wear a face covering or mask when indoors with others to help prevent spreading COVID-19 to other people. So what I'm saying is, we're still in the pandemic, and people might wear masks at times based on their own situations, but I don't, I don't foresee an issue in school with children. I think it's a personal choice at this point. So I'm perfectly comfortable at this time aligning, the recommendation is that we align ourselves to the state.
Okay, great. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome a public delegation, as we do at every meeting. We're going to keep delegation to 15 minutes this evening, with each speaker having three minutes to discuss the item on the agenda. So if you've signed up for delegation, thank you. I'm just going to call them in order. I'd like to invite Lori Leclair, 17 Matipoiset Road, to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lori.
It's okay. I have a three-minute timer, so when you hear the little chiming, that's your three minutes are over.
All right. It'll be quick. I'm glad to hear the recommendation is to leave it up to parent choice, whether or not they want their kids to wear masks. So I don't really feel like I have to go on and on, because you said what I was hoping to hear. And Ron, like you said, I was a little bit concerned, maybe about what kids would say if some were wearing a mask and some were not, but I feel like that starts at the home. We just need to tell our kids, look, some kids may not be wearing a mask. It's fine if you're wearing a mask, that's fine. I'm actually going to leave it up to my kids, to my own kids. I have one in middle school, one in elementary, and one in Fort Haven High School, and they may, one of them may choose to leave on, the other may choose to take it off, and I'm going to actually leave that up to them. So I won't go off on a tangent. Happy to hear what you guys are supporting, and thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Michelle Gonzalez of 30 Thomas Hill Road.
I, like Lori, have the same expression to say to you, that I'm very, very thankful, very thankful for yourselves. In August 2021, I was here, and I was asking for choice, and I knew how the vote was, you know, how it ended, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing us as adults to teach our children to be respectful and to wear the mask if they choose to wear it or not, but it is up to us to parent our children and to know what is right, and I thank you. And my speech doesn't have to exist any longer. Thank you.
I hope I'm saying this right. Alana Lavoy, Alena Lavoy, 39 Beaver Dam Road. Hi, Alena.
Hi.
Do you want to move the microphone down so we can hear you? Thanks.
Hi, I am Alena Lavoy, and I'm asking you to get rid of the mask mandate. My first reason is that my best friend Charlotte had a mask on when I first met her, and when she first pulled her mask out in front of me, I was confused, because I did not know what she looked like without a mask on. My second reason is that without a mask, we can see whether or not they are sad or not. My third reason is that people cannot breathe through masks in school. Fourth reason is people should be able to breathe freely without masks. My fifth reason is that it's too uncomfortable and distracting in class to learn things. My sixth reason is because the people who want to wear masks get what they want, and the people who are trying to fight don't get what they want. I'm done.
Thank you very much, Alena. We appreciate you telling us your opinion this evening. Julie Lavoy of 39 Beaver Dam Road.
I'm super proud of that kid, and I didn't quote her. Those were her words. Clearly, we're doing the math academy, because she said she had five reasons. I brought visual aids, which we're all familiar with, right? And I'll get into this one in a second. So hi, I'm Julie Lavoy, the very proud mother of Alena Lavoy, for standing up for something she believes in. This is a very valuable lesson for her, and I'm glad to see it looks like she won't be disappointed. Me, I'm a clinical, I'm a senior clinical programmer who works on some of the largest-scale COVID studies ever performed. I'm also a U.S. Air Force veteran who appreciates freedom. Yeah, blah, 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 I don't need that part. Last time, I wasn't very organized, and the three minutes kind of went like that, so I'll try to be better this time. I have a picture here of my friend Elizabeth. Elizabeth was a fellow autism mom who succumbed to COVID about a month ago. So I also am excited. I couldn't actually go to her services, because I was in the COVID pneumonia, which was caught at school, just saying. So I just want to understand that. I understand the gravity and the fear and emotions behind a lot of the fear of COVID. I get it, more than pretty much anyone. However, I have a seven-year-old autistic who has never been to AES without a mask. She has never been in public school in any class without a mask. There are currently zero barriers for vaccination, and zero excuse if you are concerned. Vaccination in Peds, by the way, is low, because it is not as necessary for pediatric patients to get this vaccine as it is the high-risk categories. I also want to point out that voting no for masks does not lure anyone from wearing a mask voluntarily. So those that are still, you know, feel like they're not safe, can still do so. Last meeting, I completely understood why the vote went the way it did, given DESI's terrorist demands. This time, I don't feel that there is any reason. And right now, the masks are creating barriers, as you heard. And right now, the masks are creating barriers, as you heard. As someone who has neurodivergent, with neurodivergent kids, it takes the focus away from learning. My attention span is already close to that of an African tree frog. I can't even imagine having sit in class and deal with this. The photo I handed out is of the sheriff's officers with kids. I love this photo. The dog is adorable. However, there's a couple of things wrong with this. Only one person's wearing the mask correctly. And they're all, none of them are socially distanced. So this mask mandate that we have going, it really isn't as effective as we think it is. If, if anything, all it does is create barriers. And you're only as strong as you can sleep. Everyone is dropping it, it'll make you cool. Don't, don't pressure. Don't make this canceling it. Disney dropped it. I don't want to let go.
Sorry to cut you off, but.
Nope.
Thank you for your input.
It's a valuable second. Being in the conference.
And Kara Payne from 44 Wing Road. It doesn't, don't worry.
Okay, just let me know when.
Now.
I think the only thing I have to say is, I think at the end of the day, it should be communication and community. We're a family, we should always be. These are our kids. At the end of the day, you're trying to do what's best. They're trying to do what's best. And I think somewhere down the line, there's going to be, you know, a point where there's a policy in place where if a certain number is reached, we know we have to go back to masks for a certain amount of time until the number's reached again. But as a parent, I should have that choice, and I know I would. And I think that you should have some faith in us. Because, I mean, my daughter had COVID. I had to keep her home. And I knew that her teacher had faith that I would have that teacher's life in mind, her peers. And I think this community has been wonderful with that. And I think that, that should continue. I really do. Faith in parents is a big deal. It's a big deal. And it's something that shouldn't be taken lightly. You know, we are the best advocates, and we'd never want anything bad to happen to you folks or teachers, because you care for our children. You're, you're number one, and I would never want anything bad for an educator of my daughter. But I sure want the power to make that choice for her as well. You know, that's, that's my God-given right. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. And I would just like to say, you know, I think everything that we do on this committee is in the best interest of kids. And four of us here are parents with kids in the district. So I just want to put that out there, that that's not forgotten, that obviously the kids are our priority too. So.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
I just want to remind folks that the goal also, in addition to keeping kids safe, is to keep them in school.
That's right.
We know what we went through with remote learning and hybrid. And it's really important to all of us that we keep our kids in school. Personally, I'd rather see the masks on and have kids here in school every day if we had to go that route. But like I said, at this point, I think we're at a place where we can pivot.
Okay, so on that note, we're going to take a vote. So what I would like to, the vote on the table is to vote to approve Dr. Bailey's recommendation to align with the Commissioner's state mask recommendation. So lifting of the mask mandate as of February 28th, making it optional in schools and per the other requirements as outlined that we discussed. So if I could request a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Or are we going to probably have to take a roll call vote on that one?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Halkro?
No.
And Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
So the yeas have it.
Okay. So, so with that, we are going to adjourn our meeting. I'll note for the public that our next regular school committee meeting will be held here in the library on Tuesday, March 8th at 5:30 PM. So if I could have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.